Session 23, it shall be the policy of municipal government to free such discrimination, especially on the basis of gender and social orientation, social class, religion, and political affiliation. Article 7, for programs for youth. Section 24, general framework of youth policy should be under the nine centers of participation stipulated in the Philippine Youth Development Plan and Local Youth Development Plan. Section 25, education, municipal government shall increase and improve youth participation in education and shall improve educational quality and performance through the following programs: A, alternative learning system because the LGU should encourage less fortunate and out-of-school youth earn their basic education enrollment through us. B, scholarship programs, the LGU through the Public Education Employment Services Office shall provide scholarship programs to deserving youth, which will give the youth an opportunity to earn the four-year degree courses, technical application certifications that will help them uplift their socioeconomic status. Special education, special centers and schools shall be encouraged in the LGU for the benefit of youth with special needs and should provide the needed assistance through capability building activities and special features. Basic literacy program, the LGU shall promote basic literacy program to educate and edit- 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 literacy among those as white and underprivileged youth by developing basic literacy skills of reading, writing, and literacy and provide space for enriching cultural education. PAG Indo, an indigenous term which means teaching that aims to teach indigenous peoples' culture and language is a way to help restore the cultural history of indigenous people in Tadala. B, this will be a program, a program of the LGU that aims to provide school supplies for underprivileged students in Tadala. Section 26, environment, the LGU shall strengthen youth participation and environmental protection through the following programs: A, boundary question program with replanting, coastal cleanup, and synchronized by a linear drive. The LGU shall encourage the youth and their involvement to environmental actions such as with growing activities, coastal cleanup, and synchronized by a linear drives that aims to indicate to the youth the practice of environmental awareness and care. B, disaster risk reduction, preparedness, and mitigation, recognizing the vital role of the youth in the disaster preparedness, prevention, and mitigation, the LGU to the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction Management Office shall provide avenue of education training and capability building for the youth in response to relevant emergencies in the community. B1 Junior Youth Responder's, organize a group of youth that will focus on emergency responses, a youth wing of the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council that empowers the youth to provide training to the grandchildren that will respond to emergencies like natural emergency, accidents, and medical emergencies. Section 27, health, the LGU shall ensure youth participation in sweeping and dressing health and psychosocial concerns through the following programs: A, youth medical services, the LGU shall provide free, if not affordable, but reliable medical services in local public hospitals and health centers. The LGU shall give job management to private hospitals and medical service providers that will run their free medical services to Tadala home youth. B, health education for the youth, the LGU shall join and support the national government in providing age and development-appropriate productive health education to the youth which shall be taught by adequate leadership teachers in formal and non-formal educational system and integrated and relevant subjects such as, but not limited to, values formation, knowledge and skills in self-protection against discrimination, sexual abuse and violence against women and children and other forms of gender-based violence, and then teen pregnancy, physical, social, and mental changes in the early sense, women's rights and children's rights, responsible teenage behavior, gender development, and responsible parenthood. B, youth sports program, the LGU shall strengthen physical and sports activities for the children and youth so as to ensure their active involvement in sports and development, including sports organizing school or after-school educational system, whether formally or informally organized. E, youth health volunteers, the LGU shall provide avenue for young medical practitioners or health volunteers to render voluntary work in times of humanitarian need. Section 28, peace, building, and security, the LGU shall strengthen youth participation in promoting peace and order through the following programs: A, safe and sustained police and civilian disability, safe and sustained police and civilian disability and the barangays are keys in protection and prevention of youth from becoming victims of crimes and violence at the grassroots of the event. Round the class patrol of policemen assigned, community process together, bars, and authorities and volunteers shall be made in every bar in order to protect Tadala home youth. B, the youth rehabilitation assistance, the LGU abhors all parts of illegal narcotics, but not the victim and users. Youth victims of drugs of youth shall be treated with care and supervision by the barangay where they belong through various intervention programs prior to their reintegrations to the community. B1 Tadala Against Drugs, the long-term program of the LGU for drug surrenderies including the youth which will provide a source of intervention and constant checking and counseling. This program aims to integrate the surrenderies back to the community and provide a sustainable source of living for the youth. Moral recovery program mandated under section 444 of RA 7160, also known as the Local Government Code of 1991, the LGU of Tadala strengthen this program by providing moral resources which is under the residency of the national government to affect moral recovery through the retreat and recollection program provided by the spiritual and values education section of the municipal government. The barangay peacekeeping program, youth barangay based response program focuses on the peace-building initiatives with Sangganyang Kabataan officials of each barangay. Section 29, governance, the LGU shall promote youth participation in government and bureaucracy with the following programs: A, mandatory and continuing training for SK officials and LYDC. For the purpose of emphasizing the role of the youth in nation building and molding them to become better citizens with a promise of positiveism, nationalism, and honor as a Filipino, SK official, whether elected or appointed, and members of the LYDC must undergo mandatory training programs. The Tadala Youth Parliament, the LGU in recognition of the vital role of the youth in national nation building and performing their civic and political rights shall provide an avenue for the youth to discuss youth issues or concerns according to the Tadala Youth Development Plan and develop young policymakers in the municipality aged 15 to 30 years old in addressing concerns and agenda of the youth. The Tadala Junior Youth Officials, the LGU shall provide opportunity for the youth, for the youth aged 15 to 17 years old to gain firsthand knowledge of government functions as related to community projects and developments. The Tadala Youth Launch Award, the LGU through the Tadala Youth, the Tadala Local Youth Development Office shall provide an opportunity for the youth to recognize outstanding youth leaders and organizations during registration, the Youth Registration Program of the National Youth Commission in the municipality of Tadala that have distinguished themselves by their exemplary achievements in various fields that have contributed positively to the LGU, Tadala's social development trust, and core values development, honor, and glory.
Madam Chair, um, sorry, may I ask? Uh, maybe Madam Chair, if the body will agree, um, the next sections that the secretary that you'll read is just the um, specific programs that this ordinance may provide to the Sanbunian. And, uh, you know, deliberation did it, but we're running out of time. And again, ang sunod nga mga basahon sa atong secretary is just the specifics of the programs nga iprovide, aning ordinas biha sa tuwang LYDC and Sanbunian Kabataan Federation. So, maybe, if you will agree, Madam Chair and my colleagues, if we can proceed, uh, to Article 10, the Tadala Youth Congress na lang po dahil Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay, so, you wish that only the sections of the program will be read?
Yes, Madam Chair.
For each, um, uh, each, uh...
Section?
Yes, Madam Chair. Are we now in section?
30.
30 already? Yeah, okay, so you may just read the name of the program, uh, Madam Chair, then proceed with the next article.
Section 30, reactive citizenship, A, the Tadala Youth Festival, B, youth organization registration program, C, observance at Linggo ng Kabataan, D, youth volunteer program, E, youth leadership summit and scouting program. Section 31, global mobility, A, internal cultural exchange programs, B, the Youth Traffic E, C, sustainable development goals. And section 32, the social inclusion and equity, A, youth with specific needs, B, anti-discrimination laws towards youth, C, compliance with accessibility law. D, youth gender and development, section 33, the economic empowerment, A, youth entrepreneurial and livelihood programs, B, youth agricultural program, C, youth financial literacy program, D, youth employment programs, D1, special program of the employment of students, D, government internship program. Section 34, other programs for the youth. Article A, the political rights of the youth, section 35, participation of the youth with decision-making, section 36, the youth participation rights. Section 37, the local youth development council must be given delegation by the municipal government in terms of planning and policymaking, especially issues involving and directly affected to the municipal youth parliament. Section, Article 9, responsibilities of the youth, section 38, responsibilities of the youth. Then for Article 10, Tadala Youth Congress. Section 39, creation, A, there should be a yearly congress of all registered youth in the municipality or as many as needed within the year upon the approval of the LYDC. B, purpose, the yearly congress shall be a medium for the Sanbunian Kabataan to borrow some perspectives from the Local Youth Development Council to present their consensus of actions and accomplishments for the year. It shall also be a video where various youth leaders will discuss issues and their kind of process of action. Citizen Manian Federation President shall appear before the youth congress to deliver his or her statement of the municipal youth address annually. Article 11, institutionalization of the Linggo ng Kabataan, section 43, Linggo ng Kabataan celebration, section 20 of the RA 10742, also known as the SK Reform Act of 2015 mandates the observance of the Linggo ng Kabataan in every barangay, municipality, and province on the week where the 12 tawagas falls according to the International Youth Day. Section 24, funding, the local government unit shall incorporate in its annual budget such amount as may be necessary for the operation and effective functioning of the local youth development office and in accordance with the COA counting and auditing rules and regulation. Article 12, monitoring and evaluation mechanism, section 23, monitor, monitoring, evaluation, and oversight mechanism. The LGU of Tadala shall establish, enhance, strengthen, and maintain the youth development monitoring and evaluation system. In establishing and executing the M and E system, the local chief executive shall issue an executive order or administrative order prohibiting the M and E team which shall monitor the implementation of the annual budget of the Tadala Local Youth Development Office, Tadala Youth, Tadala Local Youth Development Council, and Sanbunian Kabataan. It shall prepare annual status reports on the institutional mechanisms for youth development mainstreaming. The M and E team shall also evaluate the outcomes of the LGU's youth development policies, programs, and projects and report the same to the local chief executive. Article 13, transitory provisions, section 34, during the absence of the Sanbunian Kabataan, the chairman chief of the Linggo ng Youth Development Council shall invest the newly elected central chairman, newly elected by the members of the set council with a term of one year and shall not serve more than three consecutive terms. Article 14, the final provisions, section 35, issuance of implementing rules and regulations. The local chief executive shall coordinate and issue rules and regulations for the efficient and effective implementation of any article or provisions of this code. There are no issuance of the rules and regulations shall not in any manner forestall the effectiveness and implementation of this code. Uh, section 36 appropriations, to effectively implement this ordinance, youth development fund shall be appropriated annually under the general appropriation to cover specific programs for the youth sector. Section 37, if party is closed, if any provision of this ordinance is declared invalid or unconstitutional, whether the provision that affected thereby shall continue in full force and effect. Section 38, if closed, are all ordinances, local assurances, or rules inconsistent with the provision of this ordinance are hereby repealed or modified accordingly. Section 39, if closed, the ordinance shall immediately take effect upon approval.
Okay, so thank you, and very nice and very comprehensive ordinance for the youth. Uh, what's the pleasure of the body? I'm going to do the debate today, or the interpretation will be by next session? Okay, so reserve your questions? Okay, so let's proceed with the next item. Um, item, E.
Item E, drop, Municipal Ordinance Number 2315, I introduce very noble Xdon, Ordinance Prescribing Guidelines for Utilization and Other activities of the municipal waters of the municipality to the Laga San Saldetal.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Xdon.
Nagway pataas sa patong resultat mo sa pagpupusod for the park.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Xdon, and what about item F, your assignment?
Madam Chair.
Huh? Nada? Okay, and naramo sa mama?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, for me, I have Subanin Highlands Mountain Resort and Eco Park. Subanin Highland Resort, Mountain Resort and Eco Park.
Nagapi Subanin.
Nagapi Subanin.
Okay, so, so, Secretary Yata, please pay note of the suggestion.
Ako ba, Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Xdon.
Yeah, Tadala Highlands Resort and Eco Park.
Okay, Tadala Highlands. And Eco Park Resort? Uh, Resort and Eco Park. Sige, sulat.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Sige, Honorable Tepo.
Ang ako, Madam Chair, mone, Buntun Resort and Eco Park.
Bungtun.
Bungtun, Bungtun, Bungtun Resort and Eco Park.
Madam Chair, ating mga suggest ang itasas mula sa one drop sack.
Oh, sige.
Ulo ang isadis, pero hini, tumao sa pagitanan, kasi ito yunan. Uh, nagway maralat, uh, Eco Park, Eco Resort, maralat, kanan ayat, na pananawang sa bukmalinta. Ikaduwa, naipalurato resort, walang angkon, kanan puntu, sarungbalo, balurato na, original ang panalan na ngubombalo, sumalurato resort. So, ikaduwa, ikaduwa, and, uh, katakuk sa nako, kong, ibalik, kaya, kung ako amaling ng, uh, bienturan, bienturan resort. Atu bienturang, okay, pero, hini, isadis, nagwa, aming lumetimor.
Bintag ini ko, blablabi, gelenan, eto, ikano pa.
Um, pero, maralat, maralat, kanan, kanan ayat, oh, sa bukik.
Okay, ayat, okay, bongay ayat.
Ayat, ba.
Maralat, maralat, maralat.
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 Oh, maralat.
Mountain Resort.
Mountain Resort.
Sige, cepa.
Ganda, ikaduwa, katong, uh, Balurato Resort. Pero, kung berit magunakay, ubisay nganan sa atong kanan tulisin, kanan marurato, tawag ng magunato na uis katuwa, ala ng balo kay, kuwan na, kanan, nganan manas sa tawag na warrior.
Warrior, sila wala, kung banin.
Banin warrior, magunak puntu, nanan, bumalu.
Ano 'to, maralat, ayat?
Ayat.
Ayat.
Maralat, maralat.
Maralat, lumarabat, tapi, kailan?
Maralat. Sige, di ba, ita, Balurato?
Balurato, Balurato.
Balurato.
Sige, cepa. Sige, saan to, pilian to? Nagaanap, gabi, dili. Isulat, dun ano, ni? Bet, ita ito, bet, sulat to, milchik.
Subanin Highland, Subanin Highland Mountain Resort.
Nagpalangay po, Subanin? Ako, you defend, Madam Chair? Sige. Okay, um, nakakuha, napokong, kanan, during sa sopa ni Go, kay, di ba, namilshan itong Subanin Village. Actually, the, the name Subanin Village, hmm, diligaw siya, kuwan, kays, because ang, ang meaning laki eto is a village of wherein Subanin people live, mamuna siya yung definition. So, it doesn't mean, kung na word ni Subanin is, ang bilig nas siya, pwede. Uh, based ito sa sopa, ngiinun, ngiinun, napok ni Governor, and then, na ihang, di, di, or di, di, how say, kaba ni? Ihubad ba, ihubad niyang, ang meaning from our mayor na, uh, Subanin, mahon siya ng lugar nga, ingala siya, manamay subing po sa Subanin, mamuno siya, no? Uh, tinuod, dilig, naamag yutay innovation, or innovative process. So, dilig maputut pasabot nga, o do Subanin siya, wala na tay makita nga, uh, innovation higan sa ilaha. So, it doesn't mean na Subanin can have a swimming pool, only, um, we will change it, uh, Subanin Village, because the, the, the meaning of the, uh, the, the word village, ano, uy, anan siya, so, meaning, uh, even though nakadikit ang Subanin, um, it's because, uh, naamag yutay na base na kultura, that's why, naitapo ang Subanin Village, wala lang ni siya maalay, or kanan na tagaan, saktong ka, kanangan, uh, diligbut pasabot nga, pwidi, uh, dilig pwidi, uh, I mean, diligbut pasabot, wala ako ng Subanin. So, that's why I came up with the name of Subanin Highland Mountain Resort and Eco, and Eco Park. Sana siya, Madam Chair. Tadala Highland.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Sige, Honorable Xdon.
Last time, ang atong ngalan sa tuwang, eh, Subanin Village, so, ito talagang konfideksa tuang na, the world's Subanin. So, muni nga, naikamit ka ang sahaw niya, bawa ang Subanin, pero still, naaragya po, ganun na, di ba? So, nikamap ko, Tadala Highlands Resort and Eco Park, since every, kung maing to, Tadala, so, tan tanan, apet kas, banin, ininaas, anggus, kay, ato, hindi, di lunsod, no? Then, um, quite broad, talaga, Madam Chair, naanatag talaga sa iba ni social media. So, kung, matuang mga tawag, binangan na travelers, minitag it sila, say, ilang, mga tuan, so, tanabag na sila, naang say, matuan ito, si si Saativismo, say, matuan na, sa Tadala. So, what's Tadella, mga na dayan na siya dito nga, na dayan dito kay, eh, resort dito sa iba pa. Bisa duw, wala ganyan word na Subanin yuto, pero, makita na nila ganong, ah, mga, mga na na dina sa to, sa Tadella dina siya, naataan na mga resort dito sa atong iba pa. Madam Chair.
Okay, noten. Sige, Honorable Jungan.
The sauce. Ah, tanina lambo, siguro, isadist nung una, mone.
Ah.
Kaning Subanin Village and Mountain Resort, kaya katong na Highland, mountain, maunas siya. Mountain, ayaw ni pulas siya, muna po, ayaw. No, sure.
Sorry, pero yun, 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 na village.
Kung, para ilhan ng Subanin, na, dinala natuliwat uning Subanin, kaya, ano na balay, ikuwan ng Subanin.
Balay village.
Oray na ilhan.
Tama na village.
Walang ang village.
Oh, pwede po, wala na, Subanin and...
Ano 'to, Subanin? Diba?
Villas, Subanin Villas and Mountain Resort.
Tatawag na village.
Balay village.
Tatawag na village.
Subanin and Mountain Resort, ano? So, may mag, magpo, magpo kayo.
Mountain Resort and Eco Park, diba? Kung hindi ka ganan sa Highland.
Oh, kaya Highland, ang buo, ang mountain, maunas na, sao may, mountain na Highland mo dito.
Taga sa akin, nga wag mag, na i-call for lunch, say suggest reel, pero naman pa tay lunch, siya ni sa atong Lucky winner. Sa man, sure, rin ito, mas may isulat na yun suggestion, by next session, ato ng butaran. Huh? So, last, Honorable Bodo, Mount, Subanin.
Bungton. Villas and Mountain Resort.
And Mountain Resort. Si isulat na, nia.
Okay, ilhan mo ko ng Subanin Villas, isulat po doon.
Ita, na, 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 po rin siya, po.
O, muna may ilhan.
Na, 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 na.
Ang ako ng, Madam Chair, si, gaya din, bungton Resort and Eco Park.
Bungton, Bungton.
Kini manggunguan, Madam Chair, kitang Highland, sosak, Resort, kala kitang something unique, nga pa rin tao, matapal, matapadali, asukinan, japi, tadi, hapa? Katulad nga, ang ganyan, masiguro, Madam Chair, bukit, yung, 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 sa kanya lang, buo kan, ni Alihantra.
Okay, sige, noten, dada, nia. Ano 'to? Bungton.
Bungton Resort and Eco Park.
Bungton Resort and Eco Park. Taga, makita ka, Honorable Maganteng?
Imabaw.
Imabaw, okay. Sige, so, isulat ka na, balikan na, talaga, discuss, magpiy, agita by next. Huh? By next, kuwan, by next?
Yes.
Session. Okay, so let's just proceed with item G. Okay na eh. Item G, binabista.
Tulog, panin mo na.
O, panina, confirm, Subanin? Confirm na, confirm na, counterpart ko, daw. So, okay, reinital, eh, eh, di siya. Sige, muni motion.
Madam Chair, I move, Madam Chair, item G, Madam Chair, second reading, the third reading, and final, Madam Chair.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, do you seconded, the remarks, comments, suggestions? Okay, hearing none, okay, motion is approved. Item M.
Orderance. Au, Parangay Kasila, Madam Chair, supporting deal among one hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred twelve pesos and seventy six tabos. 额子, ang PDB balas, PDB two, parangay and ski election. Twenty fifty, mountain, two thousand, double expenses, eighty thousand, sixty thousand, trading, thirty thousand, for the city lights, and mounting, four thousand eight hundred twelve, with fifty, so, and for the parangay that ski will, not a party, thousand, Madam Chair.
Okay, sige, Honorable Tupo.
Au, Professor Orderance Number Zero One, dash three three three, Oparanay Kasilax and Agustin, I move from second to third and final approval, Madam Chair.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, do you seconded, any remarks, comments, suggestions? Hearing none, motion is approved for the AO, Au, Parangay Orderance, Kasilax and Agustin. Third and final reading.
Au, Dr. Orderance Number Three three, dash zero four, imposing new basis of legislation and policies for the creation of the new league, and construct tennis lover house.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Honorable, Sumaba?
Yes, Madam Chair, okay, please. I already prepared the final draft for this, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and you?
Yes, Madam Chair, like to present the section now, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Atong section?
Atong, papalalang, mga, mga?
Section four. Okay, section four. Kada siya, Madam Chair, since it was approved, approved, or was divided by the House last session, Madam Chair, and it was approved that the rural barangays are only allowed. They are only allowed for slaughtering food animals in the respective residences with a maximum of one head only, Madam Chair. For the metro barangays, they are prohibited to do so. So, redact, four point one, for personal consumption, only rural barangays are allowed slaughtering food animals in the respective residences with a maximum of one head only. In exceeding one head, the others should be slaughtered, Tadella's slaughterhouse. The metro barangays are prohibited to do so. They should slaughter their food animals only at the slaughterhouse. Kada siya, Madam Chair.
Sige, okay.
So... Okay na, ano, Madam Chair, I would like to move this one, Madam Chair, for final reading, final approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, any second, okay, do you seconded, so any remarks, introductions? Okay, hearing none, no meaning? Ah, yah, comment?
Ah, I would like to, one, one, Madam Chair, ma, katong, metro, metro barangay, Madam Chair. What, nun, di barangay sa orderance, gaya identify yun, or, naamang kuy, atong mga kaysunan, wala sila kabalo nga, di are, bilong to, ah, metro barangay.
Yeah, that portion of the definition of person? Ah, yes, Madam Chair, I will just add, Madam Chair.
If, 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 uko pwede, kaya, naamang kuy, atong mga kaysunan, Madam Chair, gawa sila kabalo nga, ang ilhan barangay is na bilong sa metro. So, even the barangay officials, I think, naapa'y mga opal barangay officials, gawa kabalo nga, apil ang ilhan barangay sa metro. So, uko pwede, Madam Chair, that only as a district before the, ah, final naman, kaya, order to the italy from...
Saan definition.
Ah, okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll just add, Madam Chair.
Bull, 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 barangay.
Okay, so, any other remarks? No other remarks, no objection, okay, motion is approved. So, approving the Orderance Number Twenty Three, dash, zero four. Okay, so, any demands?
Hala.
Escape? IP?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Atong, ngayon, ah, naamang meeting, atong, mukbichari, Madam Chair. Here, sa, ito, sa, Nungbituriano, sa Juan, in, ah, Pwala Force. So, madal kayo, Madam Chair, ang Pwala Force, ah, sa Nungbituriano, kaya matutpani, IP, parangay pa, mukulit siya, siya sa one hundred thousand, atin, bisan, kada gan'tao, bisan mawakpamahuman ang ng resort, pero, kada tao, ato, ni, Samung si Mayor, ah, Samung meeting, ni, inun si Mayor, na, watak siya, sa atong, atong, nuna, na tauran, dun ako, para, ah, three thousand. So, ah, isa kasi, ah, Bolpilya, kaya, yang, 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 di batitang, one five, para na kay, ah, ato ano ito, sa, tipo, so, apitas, diba, na, na kay, ka, pasiruganan, oh. Dito yun sa mga, Pwala Force. So, dito, tamin na, lugar, Madam Chair, to, ah, di tao mawak, to, to, eh. Ikadwa, Madam Chair. Na kay, meeting, sa, ringding, sa portis, ringding, pag atin, sa, country's meeting, mga IP, ma, karama, usko, politi, muntre, dosan, and, and, pinimon, po, kera.
Pinimon?
Pinimon.
Ah, po.
No. So, ah, na nawagan siya, na, ah, feel sa, katong, isplin, sa portis, katong, ah, istilip, malip, ma, katong, ah, atag, no, grand. Karoon, i, usko, iti, no, eh. Orak, Madam Chair.